Thank you. So move on to Agenda Item 12, 2018 and 19 accounts, Section 24, Statute of Recommendations, page 85 of the Agenda. For this item, I would like to propose that we carry our normal procedure rules to allow our auditors, the Chief Executive and Section 151 Officer to address council, then to answer any questions from councillors. After questions to the officers have been completed, I will then invite the leader to move the recommendation and council will debate and note on those recommendations in the usual way. This is agreed unanimously? Thank you. So I call on the leader of the council to say a few introductory words on this Agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd firstly like to introduce our auditors from Grant Thornton, Julie Mashy and Paul, who have worked hard over the past few months to try and get the final position in terms of an auditor's external report on our 2018-19 accounts. I think it was saying that clearly the report is significant. It outlines a number of procedural problems that we now have to take steps to address, and it has some statutory recommendations which we must take very urgent steps to ensure are addressed going forward. I've never made any attempt to hide from the difficulty of supporting the reading that it makes, but as I said in the Audit Committee earlier, elected members have the job of providing political direction, a democratic mandate to the council and achieve a policy directive that is then implemented by officers. And the vast majority of these recommendations are operational and we will need to work in time ahead to improve the resourcing of our finance team, to upskill our finance team and to try and make sure that some of the issues identifying some of our group accounting are dealt with by making sure that the standard of accounting that you would expect in our individual companies and other entities is managed properly and followed through into how those are consolidated into the council's main accounts. But as I also said to the Audit Committee on Tuesday night, I think we should thank our auditors. Our external audit is one of the protections put in place to make sure that the council's view of itself or its activity is externally checked using a whole detailed forensic set of procedures to draw conclusions from our paperwork, documents and reports. And they have found the finance team and some of the skill levels and paperwork and nature of those procedures to be found wanting. As I say, we take steps now to take action to sort that out, assets out in their various recommendations. But they are there to protect the council, have protected the council by holding a mirror up to these issues. Now that we have a greater awareness of them, we will take urgent and significant steps to sort that out. Clearly only full council can appoint and remove a section one officer and our previous 151 officers chose to leave the council before this evening's meeting. We have therefore appointed a new 151 officer at full council this evening and people can enjoy whatever goals they like about that process, but the point is we now have the rigor that is required and a team that is capable of addressing these issues. We will work hard over the coming months beyond to make sure that we achieve the standards we want for ourselves. And I am grateful to the auditors for the thoroughness of their report and pointing out what may be unpalatable reading that undoubtedly is designed to help us move forward. And we will use our transformation programme and the work that I've said to you in the Chief Executive to enable. And I do thank Steve for joining us and for helping us in that job. But I'll hand over to Julian Paul to it so that they can sit out the recommendations arising from their audit. And I found them again for their hard work, particularly in wading through some documents that the Chair of Audit and I were struggling with ourselves to understand why they weren't as complete as they should be. And I've sort of got there in the end, bit of a steep path to tread there. But now we are here, hopefully we can move forward and make good at the next two years of accounts that we go through the audit system are in much better shape. And I thank them for thoroughness and diligence in their work.
Thank you. I now call on Paul Doucet and Julie Mashy from the Grant Thornton, the council's second 151 officer and Chief Executive, to introduce the report, following which members can put questions to them. Paul Doucet, I welcome you to this meeting. I ask you to introduce the papers for council votes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say some preliminary words and then Julie will take council through the detailed recommendations. First of all, I'd like to say that statutory recommendations under the Local Audit Accountability Act are very serious. They are rarely used. We have had a run of public interest reports in the last 12 months, which are a more detailed version of statutory recommendations and more wide ranging in some respects. Generally speaking, both statutory recommendations and public interest reports are to be rarely used by auditors, but they are the major power that an auditor has. And statutory recommendations must come to full council. And the reason for that is to ensure that all members understand that all members recognise this as corporate responsibility and all members have a responsibility for ensuring that those recommendations or the management responses to those recommendations are implemented. So it's very much a full council responsibility to address the issues raised in the statutory recommendations. And statutory recommendations, which we'll come on to, raise some very serious issues and require the council to take some very difficult decisions going forward to address those issues. And the council as a whole must not shirk those difficult decisions. Management and provided response, which they talk through, is really important that management response is monitored and scrutinised and challenged where appropriate and implemented. Because these are matters of some gravity in terms of council's financial arrangements and financial governance. And it's extremely important that these issues are addressed. We discussed these matters with the Audit Committee on Tuesday night and both myself and Julie recognised that the Audit Committee viewed these matters seriously and noted the importance of statutory recommendations, which we'll discuss from our point of view. And I think before Julie takes through the detail, I think I would say that from our point of view, when do we go next with this? We will be following this up rigorously. We will be challenging to ensure that the recommendations or the management responses to the recommendations are implemented thoroughly. Just like to try and up the councillors, that if those responses are not followed through, those issues are not addressed, the council faces a risk for statutory action, including the possibility of a public interest report and including the possibility of an advisory notice about budget. So it's extremely important that these recommendations are taken seriously and respond to and issue addressed. And I think the council will find things and will look at things, will find the issues coming out of the management response that may be unpalatable and it will have to take some hard decisions. But it's really important that that happens. I'll now hand over to Julie, who will take you through detailed recommendations.
Julie Mashy, welcome you to the meeting, council. You again asked to address the council, have managed the audit process. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So turning to specific detail of the statutory recommendation report that is set out in front of you, we highlight four specific recommendations to bring to council's attention. And those two of those recommendations specifically relate to the arrangements in preparing the financial statements, specifically the extent of the funds that were identified during the course of the audit of the 2018-19 statutory accounts. We identified as a result of our audit, a number of significant adjustments which affected both the reported position for the 2018-19 financial year but also in relation to the 2017-18 financial year also. Many of those adjustments ultimately affected the level of reserves of this council. We also identified a number of specific significant control weaknesses across a wide range of areas as a result of that audit, which we set out on page three of our report. And that comprises a number of areas, including poor quality of financial records and working papers to support the figures reported within the financial statements, a lack of audit trail between those financial records and the information that was presented within those accounts, a lack of crystal review by officers of those draft financial statements before they were presented for audit, and a number of inadequacies around general good housekeeping in terms of preparation of reconciliations for things like bank accounts, debtors, creditors and other transactions. In addition, we identified a number of adjustments to the accounts in relation to the council's asset records to inform the valuations of those assets that are contained within the council's balance sheet. To summarise, what we identified was a lack of understanding by senior finance officers in terms of the requirements that they are required to use to prepare a set of financial statements. There is a specific framework that is required as per SIPA that determines how those accounts should be prepared. That framework clearly has not been followed in a number of cases in preparing these financial statements. So we highlighted in our report a clear lack of understanding and skills within the finance team to discharge those roles effectively. So we set out in the report two specific statutory recommendations in relation to the financial statements. One in terms of improvements required in the skills and capacity of the finance team to discharge those roles effectively and also to improve the arrangements around the preparation of good working papers and supporting information to inform the audit of the standing of accounts. Moving on to the next item, I'd like to Mr. Mayor specifically looking at the level of usable reserves of this authority. So looking at the position on both the general fund and earmarked reserves of this council, prior to the completion of the 2018-19 audit, the general fund levels of this council remained relatively stable. However, looking at the record of the level of reserves in relation to earmarked reserves, though, that has continued to decline over a number of years, reducing from this over £30 million in 2012-13 to £4.78 million in 2018-19. When you compare those levels of reserves to other local authorities across the country, SLA compares, your reserves are significantly lower than those other authorities nationally in comparison. As a result of the audit process that we had conducted 2018-19, one significant adjustment was required to the accounts as a result of an overabrearsal of anticipated profits for one of the council's commercial entities. The consequence of that adjustment has effectively reduced the council's available reserves by just over £7.5 million, which effectively has now reduced your general fund reserves at the end of 2018-19 to just over half a million pounds. Now, it's important to highlight this council that obviously our audit work for the 2018-2020 and the 2020-21 financial year is still yet to be conducted. And so it's really important that members recognise the significance of this in that the undertaking of those additional audits may indeed find further concerns affecting that position. The final area to highlight is around the fact that the council has obviously clearly identified a significant steward program that will be required going forward to ensure a good financial management stability going forward. And so we are highlighting to the council the fact that it's very important that the council puts in place appropriate arrangements and medium financial planning improvements to replenish these level reserves at the earliest vision opportunity. The final areas specifically covered around group arrangements, I think it's important to highlight to council that we've not conducted a detailed review of the council's group companies as part of our audit. The matters that we set out specifically within the statutory recommendations report is specifically as a result of findings that have come to our attention during the course of the completion of the audit of the financial statements. Our 2018-19 audit identified a number of findings. Specifically in relation to James Ellman Homes, we identified that that specific company does not at present operate its own financial systems and records to record that specific company's financial transactions. We understand that all of those transactions are processed at the moment through council's own financial systems and records. There are separate account codes to assess and identify those transactions, but it does rely on the ability of officers to specifically identify and isolate these transactions, to specifically identify those matters that relate directly to the company. And so therefore we highlight to the council that there is currently, given the current arrangements of risk, that specific transactions relating to that company have not been identified within the council's own financial data. As a commission organisation, it is important, given they have their own separate accounting legal and accounting and tax requirements, that those arrangements are put in place to specifically and separately identify the financial controls and the financial transactions of that company. Other items have been brought to our attention as part of the work. We also identified in reviewing the records of James Ellman Homes as part of our group account audit, that the statutory audit was commenced on James Ellman Homes for the 2017-18 financial year. However, for reasons that remain unclear at the moment, that we've been unable to establish, the audit for the 2017-18 year was never completed. The audit was certainly commenced and indeed if you took on to the public records for companies' house, in fact, a draft audit report was added to a set of accounts for James Ellman Homes later enacted in a subsequent version. It's really important that statutory audit process is undertaken to give this council assurance around the adequacy of the financial records of companies that are within the oversight of this authority. And so it's really, really important that that is undertaken as a process. I can however assure the council that new auditors were appointed in 2018-19 and that process has continued subsequently. We continue to consider that as part of our financial statements audit in terms of what potential impact that would have on our 2018-19 audit opinion. But I'm satisfied that the absence of the audit process in the 2017 meeting accounts does not materially affect my opinion on the council's group accounts for 2018-19. Finally, I would also be tempted, the council's arrangements in relation to officers who fulfil the roles, both of officers of the council but also have been appointed specifically as directors to the council's commercial entities. It's very difficult therefore for the council to be able to challenge the commercial operations of such companies and ensure it operates in the best interests of the council when officers effectively are fulfilling a dual role for both council and company. We have set out in our statutory recommendations that the council undertakes a detailed governance review of its commercial operations and puts appropriate arrangements in place to manage and mitigate any potential risks of conflicts of interest. Mr. Mayor, I'll pass over to, I believe, to the Section 151 Officer, who will now provide the management response on behalf of the council.
Or maybe can I ask Chief Executive to set up the council's response to the recommendations before the Section 151? I'll have to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Grant Thornton. We welcome the report of the auditors and thank them for their forensic work that they have carried out. We will utilise this work robustly on our journey of financial recovery. We fully acknowledge the seriousness and urgency of our current situation and we are determined to address the challenges we face, making sure that we get the highest quality financial management in the future. We want you to know that we are totally committed to robustly and proactively addressing this situation. I think this Chief Executive taking role was to radically transform and modernise the way we work and to redefine how we deliver services to our communities. We are two years into our transformation programme, having launched the Our Futures Programme in July 2019. Through this programme, we have designed and recently implemented our new operating model, an ambitious programme of work which we continued despite the challenges presented by COVID-19. This has broadened many of our concerns with our financial management. However, because of the work that we have done, we have never been best placed to turn this around. As can be seen from the management responses, we are committed to resolving the weaknesses as reported by the auditors and indeed any other matters that are identified. We have already brought in high skilled, experienced staff to tackle the issues and to get our financial processes back on track. We have instigated a reinvigorated and refocused Strategic Finance Board that will oversee from an officer perspective progress on this. And I'm suggesting that we engage fully and seek the support of a scrutiny cabinet working group on a quarterly basis. We will come back to full council annually to update all members. In doing all this, we will ensure that we provide better value for money for the taxpayers of SLA, much better evidence of the stewardship of taxpayers' money to all of our stakeholders and to secure the financial future of the council and the borough. We do not underestimate the time a financial turnaround will take. These typically take around four years. We're going to try and do it much quicker than that, but typically take four years. Step one is the identification, the change of direction and setting up excellent practice. Step two is embedding of that practice and issues that will come out throughout that time. The Our Futures Programme has recently designed a new leadership structure. We have a new leadership team. This gives us the strategic and leadership capacity to move this forward and take decisive action. Leading our team through this, we have already begun the identification opportunities. This will allow us to reinforce our transformation programme to ensure it is targeted in the right areas to support our financial challenges as we move forward together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I now ask Section 151 Officer to explain what plans are in place in the light of audit this final.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by stating our absolute commitment to addressing the recommendations that our auditors have made and that we have every confidence that we can address these matters. This will however take us time to do so to the quality standards that we want to achieve. And I have no doubt that there will be some challenging decisions for members of council to take. We have however already started on this journey and you can see under the first one, the preferences financial capacity and skills, we've already secured resources to come and work for SLA. A word of example, one of those is the UK's leading experts on local authority accounting and one is an expert on commercial finance, business cases and major projects. They will not only be here to help us drive through the accounts and financial management changes, they'll be here to upskill the council's overall team. Gaps in that team will be addressed through interim resources and in the longer term, we will review the council's financial structure and come forward with a permanent enhanced structure for that service. Equally, we are overlooking a training and development, the technical training, leadership management, business planning, other relevant matters. Second statutory recommendation about the preparation of financial statements, we will begin with a comprehensive account plan. We will link it to the work and plan of the auditors. We will have a training plan, communications plan and a resource plan. Just importantly, we will have a three-stage quality assurance process. So everything that is prepared is vetted and verified by the individual doing so. However, we will then add to that a technical review of every individual working paper before the accounts are issued. And there will be a further stage, which will be a sign off review by a senior officer to since check this before it goes to our auditors. We're going to adopt a whole team approach. We're not going to restrict this to one or two people and give you a single person risk. We're going to get a whole of the finance team working on this. That will upskill them, strengthen their experience, give you security for the future should anybody subsequently move on from the council. And again, the training and development form a major part of this. We have a suite of training materials and that work will be undertaken. On the third item, which is the levels of usable reserves that has been referred to, we've gone, as Chief Executive said, a robust process, a review of our base budgets, looking at all the savings proposals that are already committed to either council, looking at pressures, mitigations and monitoring. And we will have a complete suite of savings proposals for the following financial year. We will be named individuals, named departments responsible for these and they will all have a robust business plan and action plans underneath them. As to the reserves builder, we are suggesting this will take place over five years. We'll bring forward the figure to part of the preparation of the 2022-23 budget process for members to consider. On fourth and final recommendation, references financial governance and controls. Again, we have started its work, looking at our third party organisations. We will make sure that the organisations are delivering to your requirements. We will undertake a review of the financial transactions and financial information that they supply. We will look at the senior responsible officers, any other necessary work that would be required. We're sure SLA council is receiving the information and the service that it needs to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody for the report. Now, members will be aware that at the time that the matter was discussed in detail, an audit and corporate governance committee held on Tuesday evening and a number of members between already in attendance on June 30, in order to allow a fair opportunity to everyone, I will begin with taking one question from any member who has indicated that they would like to speak and then come back to any members who may have any additional questions. And when putting the questions, can you specify who the question you are putting to? Thank you. Construct them before you ask the question, please.
I'd like to, I've got two questions that should be answered. Firstly, I'd like to put it to our second one, one officer. Given the state of the past new budgets and this year's budget and with the fact that our reserves weren't what they should have been, was this year's budget great and balanced, all of those issues? And in those two budget meetings, we were assured by the leader and other leading cabinet members that our financial management and planning was excellent and was confirmed by SIPA and other agencies. Are the statements in your view incorrect and should be changed? And just we should be noted that they are not excellent and were not excellent? Because as I said in the previous meeting, if we put garbage information into the system, we get garbage data out that can show whatever this organisation wants to make itself look better than it wants.
I think on the two points, the budget was certified as a balanced budget. The income equaled the expenditure. It was a balanced budget at that point in time. There was acknowledgement in a statement on the budget about the risks that the council faced. Obviously, those risks have increased, hence I comment about challenging decisions that may be needed in the future, but it was a balanced budget at that point in time. As to the comment about the quality of the financial management, I think we acknowledge that we are going to improve that absolutely. We are bringing in absolute expertise to assist the council in the future. We are committed to working with all our existing staff. We have some very good, excellent staff and we will work with them and we will enhance their development. And if there are gaps, then we will bring in interim recourse to address that.
I'm Adam Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the question is roughly the same to councillor Sutton. I'll ask it anyway, because I have three questions, please. As to the finance team, was the current leadership Was the current leadership in finance team aware of the issues raised by the audit when the vote was presented on Martin Gate? And did that make the budget, in your opinion, is incorrect or correct? Second question, per meeting held in December with the leadership team, discuss the scale of the issues, were they aware of it in December? And the final question is, you mentioned the next financial year. Given the urgency of the situation, are we looking at something before then? Budget was bringing minus scale of the issue that we have in front of us. Thank you.
It is slightly difficult for me to comment on some of those because I physically wasn't at the council. I will endeavour to do my best to work. Some people were aware. I believe reports were printed to the audit committee over several months. So I have no doubt issues were discussed at that meeting. I have no doubt that matters were brought out. I do not believe, but I cannot be certain about this, that the full quantum of what the auditors eventually identified was known. Because obviously that will come at the end of the audit process. You will appreciate, I was not here, I'm reflecting on the information I have received. Likewise, I'm sure the leadership team was aware of the audit as it progressed. Again, that was not a completed audit. It's not reflected in what we hear. Once you get to the end of the process, you can look at it holistically and see the impact. If I understand your third question correctly, we are not giving a date. You will have noticed when 1920 the council will produce. We are going to absolute root and branch review of everything. We are going to make sure this is of the highest quality. And then at that point, we will submit the accounts to the auditors for an audit at that time. I cannot put a date on that, if that is what you were referencing in your question, councillor Kelly.
Councillor Halliwell and then councillor Bailey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question will be to the auditor, but first I'll make a few statements.
Councillor Halliwell. Well, the next section will be making statements.
Okay, fine.
I'll appreciate if you can ask a question. Thank you.
Okay. My question to the auditor is, they have mentioned that James Ellman and some of the sidearms of the Slough or council, which are working as an independent company or trading as an independent company. I'm sure the accounts which they held it and first the auditors and those auditors, it should have been responsible doing the, having the validity of those accounts which were held. And by those sort of anomalies and discrepancies which happened, which we were just picked up, say 1920 and 17, 18, 19, even previous auditors, those sort of big figures which they have come. Was there some sort of lack of audit by the previous auditors? So that, you know, all of us were quick, there's huge gaps have come up. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I don't think it's appropriate for us to comment about the work of the resources. What we can say is the audit of the 18th counts identifies for adjustments, prior year adjustments. This will happen sometimes, to put it, and we've identified those and they're reflected in our audit findings report. On Tuesday, but I'm not in a position to comment on the work of other organisations who audit and previous audits of the council or James Ellman Homes.
Thank you, councillor Bailey.
Thank you. My concern is to CEO, I should say. Residents have had to read these reports and they know that now there's going to be frontline businesses will be deeply impacted. I had asked for a public apology to be made to residents for the huge failings and hope that that will happen.
Is that a question or, oh, I thought it was a statement. Okay. No, I mean, of course it's deeply responsible. The situation has arisen. And, you know, as we go through and understand how we close the gaps, we will be having conversations with our residents around that. Thank you.
Councillor Halliwell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is in relation to the financial governance and our dealings with the.
Councillor Halliwell, can you stand up?
Sorry.
Then, so.
My question is in relation to the financial governments and particularly in our dealing with third-party organisations. Given that one of them, which you've highlighted, has little or no financial accounting conventions or processes in place, what are the plans for a short-term dealings with companies like that? I know the long term probably will be to make sure that we deal with companies that have some sort of accounting conventions in place. What are short-term plans for such companies, please? Thank you.
We will do with all of these organisations, irrespective of their size, materiality or significance. We will be meeting with them all. We will be undertaking a review of every one of these organisations and we will be working with them to ensure the highest possible standards. We will not be accepting anything less than the best and best that is required from each of those organisations.
Thank you, councillor Street.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is to section one five one officer. One of the recommendations, one of the which you highlighted there is a number of interim staff appointments by council. My understanding is yourself, when you're bringing in a few more interim staff to sort of address immediate issues. What is the plan that, you know, you will start to build, sort of a permanent team, a finance team within council from the start rather than, you know, sort of go to the job and then hand over later on?
It's not a case that the interns will do the job and hand over. The interns will work with permanent staff from day one and indeed have already started doing so. I think given the serious nature of this, we would be optimistic to assume that existing colleagues can on their own sort of the leadership take this forward in the timescale that you would desire. But these are really still people that are putting a lot of time and effort in already to assist Slough and they are working with our existing team. So what will happen? It will be a continuum of temporary resources here now working with your permanent team. We will review the permanent team and make sure that it will sit for the future. The interim results will eventually come down and the permanent team will move on. We have to have both. You have to have a mix to achieve what we need to achieve.
Thank you, councillor Ryan, please.
Thank you, Mark. That's the question to chief executive. I've seen to work on the council that they continue and make the improvements.
Thank you. One by one can confirm this, but we have funding already approved in the budget for £700,000, two tranches of £350,000 each.
Councillor Jay.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got two questions, one for the second one five one. It's taken quite a long time to get our 1819 account to the audit stage and obviously potential issues in two-year accounts, I suppose. How confident are you that these new accounts can be brought forward to the audit process much more quickly? You can identify the bigger issues early on in the process rather than wait almost years before starting these issues come up? That's the first question. Second question is for the auditors. I had it basically oversee, you raise a number of concerns and the council has come forward with a number of measures to rectify the issues. Do you confident that these measures being put in place by the council could fix the issues going forward? Do you feel there are still some shortcomings that need to be put in place?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Of the first question, we are not putting a date on by when we will deliver the 1920 and beyond accounts. We will give this council the highest quality. We will work at pace. But we are not able to tell you when. We are not going to be sold. The most important thing is the job is done correctly. It is a root and branch review. It then makes you an absolutely stable place moving forward in the future. What I would further advise to the chief executive is, as I said, we are recommending that we come quarterly to a cross-party group so that it is not that you will not be aware on a stage basis. But we are not committing to a particular annual set of accounts by a certain date. But we are trying to engage, keep people informed as we go through the process.
I think in terms of our confidence and clearly the process of all the things we identified from 1819, but we've had some very positive responses to the recommendations. We are aware that the new finance team has been tracking in delivering high-quality accounts. They're moving quickly, but also where it has been pointed at by section one five one officer. This is not a quick job. It will take time to produce a robust set of 1920 accounts that are high-quality that can be ordered in a timely manner when they are produced. So I'm confident in the direction of travel, but recognising the inherent weaknesses that our report has flagged out. It will take some time to actually get this right. And I think we are probably not going to get fully back on track in terms of the time sales for staff review audit for a couple of years because it will take time to get these accounts right. Confident as yet, but we'll be watching very closely.
Councillor Lewis.
Yes, I still wanted to provide you with the answer about when the political leadership of the council became aware of some of these issues because it would be rather absurd to ask that to one by one officer when I'm sitting in a room and can give him an answer. I first became aware of the significant liability issue we had with our children's trust in the summer of last year and then transitionary meeting we set up with the DAP and our commissioner Trevor Doughty to look at the financial pressures relating to that. That led to part of justification for our capitalisation request when that became clear that the children's trust couldn't settle its debt of about four and a half million plus its overspend of one a bit. The business REITs liability we also included in our capitalisation request, I became aware of, I think, in October of last year. And the issue about the error in the 2017, 18 accounts, which brought two and a half million and then the four plus million pound error, then the same error to repeat in the 18, 19 accounts. That was flagged to us by the auditors around the middle of March. I commented this at a stage, Julie May, I'll know the meeting in which she pointed that out once we received some further council papers. That was after the cabinet approved the budget and I think after the council had approved the full budget it certainly in that sort of tail end of March period. And that obviously led us to then to make subsequent adjustments to reflect that figure. And as I say, that's the two and a half million pound error from the 2017 accounts that because of that profit, which we made in the 2018 and 19 accounts, became the error that made we had to make the adjustment to the reserves. And I discovered that problem with the auditors towards the end of March. So I hope that avoids a doubt about that in relation to the answer please, wish to have an answer.
And further questions to the presentations, councillor Sutton.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I do have several other questions. First one to Julie. In the last audit meeting, the statement made that the Jane element had to be always. You just said that there's only a draft audit, which was really taken back. The draft audit submitted, but then removed because there was an issue with it. It's very unusual, isn't it? Can you give me your view, why someone would remove that draft issue if it will get a chance?
So councillor, just to clarify specifically the points that I raised. So a full audit was conducted by board members of the company for 2018, 19. Auditors also appointed for 2017, 18. The audit was commenced. What we, it's public record, you can look on company stats even as we speak. What we can see is a draft audit report unsigned was attached to a set of 2017, 18 account for James Ellman Homes. It was a subsequent pilot which removed that audit report at a late date. Unfortunately, I don't have the specific date of when both those items were added. So really an audit process was commenced in 2017, 18. We had that confirmed by council officers. And when I made further inquiries to the reason why that audit was not completed, the response I've been provided by officers is that there was concern raised by officers who are, who were at the time also directors of the company, that they had been some difficult relationships with their appointed auditors at that point in time and they were concerned around risks of delayed filings with companies' house. Unfortunately, having your facts than that, to confirm that the audit was not completed, the final signed audit report was not, was not attached to those accounts that were filed with companies' house.
What do you know from there? Just to show everyone to where the limited companies are not stuck in the same position as local authorities. Should you find there are serious issues in those limited companies that need to be reported to our financial organisations and other bodies? Will you be passing those on quickly and what actions could come about if there are anything harmful, restrictive as what's gone wrong with our own accounting pledges?
Just to clarify, I'm not the appointed author for either those individual companies that you specifically referred to. My duty is to undertake the audit of the council and its accounts as a group. And so we've already identified specific issues around the governance rating in terms of how the council is interacting with those group entities. We often review specific work that is undertaken by the individual appointed auditors of those companies and required as part of my opinion on the group accounts of this council to take into consideration any significant findings from those individually appointed auditors before I'm in a position to issue my own opinion on the council's accounts. Looking at specific conclusions that were raised as part of the 2018, 19 opinion for those commercial entities, the audit finding reports and audit opinions do not highlight any specific or fear of concern. I've reviewed the specifics of the opinions. The opinion does highlight the fact that the 2017, 18 accounts were not subject to an audit. That highlights specifically in their opinion. So I will bring obviously to the council any matters that come to my attention in port and ducking my responsibilities as a reporter for this council. But just to clarify, I don't specifically undertake the individual work in relation to the audit for those individual entities.
Councillor Sutton. I'll allow a couple more questions. That's fine. I'll allow a couple more questions, but we need to go on. Thank you.
This is a rather serious matter and it shouldn't be construed by time. And again, you reflect badly on the advice from the auditors that we are given time to scrutinise it. But perhaps our section one, new section one five one officer could tell us what he would do if those files were fact, you know, those limited companies that he, I suppose is in some way responsible for.
If anything is not correct, then we will take all appropriate action about any such matters if I became aware of any such matters in the future, I guess.
Going through the report and I said at the audit meeting, it's not just an issue with our finance officers. It's endemic throughout the organisation and the reporting by various departments of their spend and income coming in. And obviously of HR in the performance management, management of the staff's capacity and capabilities and doing the job effectively. The other point is in.
Councillor Sutton, is there a question there? So you keep making statements. As I said earlier, you can listen to people I'm saying. You'll have opportunity in the next section to make your statements. You'll have opportunity in the next section to make your statements. I've already asked other councillors, not vexations, statements. You've got quite right to ask questions and I'm allowing that, so please do ask the questions.
We'll come back to that later to point it. My next question is actually to, I see, you said that these statements will come back annually. The section one five one officer said quarterly is a part of them. Why aren't those coming back to the full council? In this same way, has he explained why shouldn't they come back to the full council quarterly? Not the other, because it is a responsibility of the whole council to answer our past and address things. And they are serious, so I would request that either you revise that to every quarterly or every six months until we get on straight and narrow on this. The final question to do then is potentially, you outlined the costs of you just signed up for the raise, gone up from just under a hundred thousand to four hundred and twenty five thousand roughly as of December this year. When will we have that final cost and will we be seeing similar costs incurred for the next two years audits?
Constable, the final cost of the audit will be provided to officers first, comment once the audit is finally signed off, which was a bit shortly. But the point I'm saying is that that cost will go to the appointed body for their scrutiny and challenge. And they will make a final decision on what that fee will be. I think it's fair to say they have a lot of work to do at the moment, so have made that decision, I can't be sure. In terms of looking forward, looking at nineteen twenty and beyond, there are already scale fees in place under the P S A regime. We will be proposing an audit plan of nineteen twenty due course. That audit plan will take account of that scale fee. Of course, it will take account of both the specific challenges we have had in Slough, and it would also take account of regulatory changes that existed in the audit market, which is not specific to Slough, it affects all finances. So in terms of nineteen twenty fees, all finances had a variation on their fee to reflect those changes in the regulatory market. So this is quite a slow process, which is unfortunate, but because there are a number of parties involved, including M H C L G at a very high level, who supervised this and the L G A, who supervised the work of P S A. It's quite a time-consuming process, but of course, as soon as a figure is available, that will be reported to all the authority. And we'll take that from there.
If all the questions are finished, then may I remind members that the
Mr Mayor, just a quick one. Auditers, question to the auditors. Auditors, if I'm correct, the auditors just mentioned that the audit for two thousand and nineteen and twenty is going to start imminent. Because certain discrepancies and anomalies, they have been indicated in the previous audit. Probably if you start the audit for nineteen nineteen and twenty straight away, probably there could be still some more anomalies because same financial officers, they were doing it. As our new team is in place, if, what is your opinion, if some time has been given to them so that they can perform their internal introspect, those accounts, those issues which were going on for some time, and they have been corrected and rather and all whatever needs to be highlighted and brought to the surface, and they have a chance to bring it up once everything is on the surface and a clear picture is on the on slate, and then used on the audit, and that may give us a better
Constable Daliwal, I'm going to show the question.
All right, I finish.
Constable, apologies for any confusion. What I meant to say was the eighteen nineteen audit will be signed imminently. Section one five one officer has set out a root and branch review of the council's financial reporting range taking place, and we will not be undertaking that audit until section one five one officer is satisfied that those accounts have been properly prepared and robust. So we will certainly be giving the council plenty of time to prepare those accounts to
I'm assuming there are no more questions? Well, thank you very much then. And so I remind members that in normal debate now applying in accordance with that, I now call on the leader of the council to move the recommendations as set out in the report. Constable Sabar, is that seconded?
May the seconded and I'd like to speak now. And first of all, thank you for the hard work they've done to ensure the council signed off. It's been a difficult two years of auditing committee to get to the place they are. Our relations have already come out from the council now. I've got full confidence in the new section one five officer and his eighteen that's coming in. We have through this difficult process and to ensure that we don't end up in a situation again. And while it says chair of the audit, they will and hold to account in this process to ensure that the committee does everything not end up in the same situation again.
This item to debate, and I'll let one member wishes to speak on this item, please. Can I ask Constable Daliwal to speak first, because I've asked him that he can make his pitch. Oh, thank you. In that case, then I'll give three minutes to Constable Stotan.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying before, I had met stops again, I do highlight it's not just our finance department that's at fault here. It is senior management, middle management, all the way down in how our reporting entered finance. It also includes because how a legal team did not address the issue of the trial years in and put stop to that and reduce the financial state beyond that. So there is, as I've said before, about performance management and about H R's involvement in how we work for us, the number of contract staff that we have on our books, which is just under four hundred, it's about three, three hundred and seventy. Will the interim staff on that payroll who are on our books, who haven't really been investing in them because they're not full-time employees as such? And are we going to use the money that we saved by terminating their contracts and getting new interns who are paid for or doing the job to try and save some of the costs over the next few years of delivering these improvements? And how are we really confident in your status and the new state, yeah, that you will do it? But my concern is how we do the annual reviews of senior officers, directors, and everything else to make sure they're up to power, up to the job and in a position to continue. I've raised this issue several times in the past, poo-poo for raising it, poo-poo for questioning the excellence of our financial reporting and planning. And here we are today in this position. I really would like some a bit more to answer on it, and I would like an answer from the C E O about will she be used to us more than once a year at the fore?
Anybody else got any statement to make? Constable, this is your question, I'm saying. So, yeah, yeah, that's very much what I'm saying. And thank you for using some of the words you're using now. So you do not please then say to us when they start using like garbage and cuckoos.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Members of the council, the elected Slough and the general public must all be fully aware, having heard the very very first words that we heard, Mr De Sette, that the right of office in the world has been held by the council. The council's financial management is failing, has failed, is to be right. The council has changed both its operations and its balance. A period of financial uncertainty exists and our practices of fact are not sustainable. The council is not as much as it thought it had. We've all, we've all been here, the council has issued statements saying that savings of some sixteen million pounds in the current year will be necessary for another eighteen million in the next year. This is the same I've seen in terms of years in the council. Two thousand and three, it happened when our reserves were around a quarter of a million pounds at that time. The director of the council was the deputy leader, so so are some people of the type of myself who are still here and remember that. Two thousand and three, a year, a bunch of big issues that made a cut resulted. We embrace ourselves on the fact that a root and branch restructure and elimination of the council's plans are now less sought. The process of learning how to control the financial will be expensive. That's speaking of the rest of this table for this two thousand and eighteen nineteen, we're covering the region of around forty fifty thousand pounds. But seven hundred thousand pounds have been provided for the changes. We must be prepared to scrutinise the changes to make sure that they're done in the best interest of the people of Slough. Must welcome the changes and the openness that results. Thank you.
Constable Smith. Constable Swindlers?
Oh, I simply had a quite personal explanation, Mr Mayor, as my name was mentioned. The year this is referring to is two thousand and one. It may not have been reported until two or three, but it was a year when I was not a member of the council. The social services issue that he refers to where we had, as I understand it, removed some money from reserves to pay for an overspend was the two thousand and one, two year, and I didn't join the council until May two thousand and two. I think he's just misremembered, and I'd just be grateful if he sticks facts therefore rather than trying to smear me of misinformation when I wasn't even elected.
Constable Lewis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say, the council is responsible, town and its residents. This is not a game of monopoly in which we can choose to buy whatever land we see fit in whichever town. This is not a ministerial error. It was the response that was given to me. This is real life, and this will lead to serious implications. Do you have expertise or actions by who? With how much, but what I haven't heard is who's taking responsibility? I would like to understand who and who was signing off reports that led to this point. Surely the section one five one officer and the finance department could not have been operating in isolation for the last three years, three or more years, I should say, now fix this at a huge cost. My concern is that, and that of how this was allowed to happen and who is ultimately responsible for these huge and said, I said, lives of residents we stand to I am contacted by a resident who is a financial accountant. I read to you her words. She did all the work I have ever seen. I was talking about a one man that's grown suddenly over a year or two and tried to do its own accounts without any kind of book. It would be more understandable. She would be happy to come into the council and help sort out the reconciliations and processes. This is her key strength, and she recognised the robust culture being this will not happen. Instead, the residents will be severely impacted and they have no say. Somebody needs to be held accountable. If we were not in this council, if we were in a business environment, somebody would be held accountable. And that needs to be held, happened here.
Any more speakers? Can I ask for a vote completely?
You may. I'll use my right to speak then. It's all right. It's that's the end of the item. Responsibility, obviously the errors first appear in our twenty seventeen accounts when there was a different composition of administration in place here. Unfortunately, the same error was tracked through by the same officers appointed again, probably by in that period in the nineteen accounts. And then we had a whole range of sort of own process about creating the documents required, had a process that gave robust accounts for that financial year and indeed the subsequent ones. The local government association is very clear that senior members are supposed to provide political direction, democratic accountability, and try and implement priorities that they set politically for the council. Since I became leader at the end of twenty seventeen, I have tried to do that. That's not to say that we don't take responsibility as the administration, putting out the issues that we have now discovered. And as the opposition constantly point out, we are in control of this council. The Labour group will take the actions required to deal with this. We have financed the pre-separable portfolios in the cabinet previously and certainly during that year. In the shuffle that I've just conducted, I've taken full responsibility to manage the government portfolio going forward in terms of economic governance to make sure that the grip is there and that there is clear accountability. Previously, we had strategic finance in terms of the overall N T F S planning and things in my portfolio, some of the operational finance in other portfolios. We have corrected that error, so it's much clearer in terms of who is the elected member, the elected trying to drive these improvements. We will implement all of the auditors' recommendations set out for six, pages six to nine of their report in full. And it will look like at the end of the year just finished, we had a two point eight billion pounds under March twenty twenty one, and that money has already been moved to reserves to try and make sure that although clearly as a consequence of the accounting error, we sailed very close to the wind, that we are already beginning the process trying to make sure a little bit more slack going forward. Undoubtedly more issues, which we will have to deal with those, but we are at the beginnings now of to deal with this. On the ninth and tenth, the auditors published to us their final report, at which point they confirmed the tracking of some of the areas they've begun to show to us. And we had a duty then to publish within a month, and stuff to counter. We have done that in a matter of days rather than in a month to show that we need to clean this up and sort it out now. Political parties set out their stores all across this election, and because the draft audit report was made in March, the issues were well aired. I have my Conservative leader that came to my door here, talking about Labour's billion pound debt, all the financial problems, all over it embellished in some colour and some of it not actually
Constable Swindlers?
The result is people had their choice at the electoral we will now do that.
Thank you. No, I can um ask people those in favor of revisions? Well, that is fifteen percent of this council's business policy and uh thank you very much.